Thank you very much. Call the council meeting to order. Please be seated. Motion to reconvene the open council meeting. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed and carried. And. I wanted to make an announcement to start out the meeting. It's certainly been a rough day in Burnaby. We've had a lot of snow. In fact, we were, I think, the most severely impacted of any of the cities in the lower mainland, which is surprising. It's not often us that takes the brunt of a snowstorm, but apparently it was raining off in the valley. And so we have taken a lot of the effects of this snowstorm. I want to thank staff for the great job they've been doing all day in order to, well, from last night, to be able to ensure that Burnaby was able to move. But even with their best efforts is that British Colombians aren't always the best drivers in the snow. And we've noticed some pretty serious problems out there. I hope people are patient with us and with each other as a result of it. And I want to thank everybody for making it in, all the councillors. I know that many of you had hour-long drives from your houses a few blocks away, some two hours. So it was pretty difficult to get here. It shows your determination to do the city's business. I also, though, had tonight a very positive announcement, and I'm going to read the news release on this out of Chicago from the Government Finance Officers Association. "The Canadian Award for Financial Reporting Has Been Awarded to the City of Burnaby, British Columbia by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its annual financial report. The Canadian Award for Financial Reporting Program was established to encourage municipal governments throughout Canada to publish high-quality financial reports and to provide peer recognition and technical guidance for officials preparing these reports. Its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. A Canadian Award for Financial Reporting Achievement has been awarded to the individuals designated as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning report. This award has been presented to Denise Jorgensen, Director of Finance and the Finance Department. The annual financial report has been judged by impartial Canadian Review Committee members to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, designed to clearly communicate the municipality's financial story and to motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The GFOA is a nonprofit professional association serving nearly 19,000 government finance professionals in the United States and Canada, with offices in Chicago, Illinois, and in Washington, DC." And the actual award is right here. So I want to congratulate everyone involved. Mr. Chu. I want to particularly congratulate Denise Jorgensen, who is our Director of Finance, for the great work that they have done. And please pass on council's commendation to all of your staff. It really is an award that recognizes, I think, the finest tradition of financial management, and that is making sure the public knows exactly what you're doing with the money. And we appreciate that. So, thank you. All right. And with that. A motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting held on November the 21st, 2016. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Motion to adopt the minutes of the public hearing zoning held on November the 22nd, 2016. It's been moved and seconded. Okay. So with that correction, it's been corrected already, right? Councillor Dallywell.
Oh, okay. I'm into Wisconsin. Calendino said, but I can't care of this now. How do I do it again? President Hold requests to speak. Thank you.
All right. And with that amendment, all those in favor, opposed and carried. A motion to resolve into a committee of the whole to consider reports. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed and carried. And the first report, item 3A, is from the Financial Management Committee, Councillor Johnson.
I would move that council authorize the city solicitor to prepare a capital expenditure by law in an amount of 4.14 million, inclusive of taxes, for hardware replacement, software licenses, professional implementation services, as outlined in the report. Your worship, the report this before us is authorizing an update to our SAP system, the basic core software. But every 10 years or so, the manufacturers of software packages such as this change how the system functions. And as a result of that, require its users to come forward with a upgrade package that has to be replaced. And basically, it updates and changes the software so that we have the current configuration. The report this before us is recommending that we spend the 4.14 million to do the upgrade on the software. This does some upgrade software that was last updated in 2008. I think the committee, listening to the presentation from staff, I think this is a good, wise use of funds, because after a point, you get to a point where manufacturers of software don't support the product if you don't keep them current. So based on that, I would recommend the recommendation before us.
Councillor Dallywell.
Thank you, your worship. I believe there's not any choice other than to support this recommendation, considering what the report has said, that they will not be supporting the older version of SAP. They've got to move to SAP, something called HANA. And knowingly well, the company knows that all users most likely won't have a whole lot of choice, because if we don't, there's always that threat that we will not be supporting. So we really don't have a whole lot of choice, so we will be doing this. There's a lot of it's going to be hardware replacement. Some are going to be software, but licensed for the new software. And it is, it can be argued that the functionality, new functionality, is going to be of marginal benefit to us, because the functionality doesn't change. It's just basically a new platform, which means in order for us to function, we have to continue to pay. And the other factor is, even though I recognize that technology changes very frequently, this was purchased in 2009. That's what we're changing seven years down the road. And be ready to do another one five years down the road or so, again. So the reason I raise this, your worship, isn't about that supporting this, and I think we don't have a whole lot of choice. People support this because you've got to go forward. But I believe the staff should perhaps make a very considered effort to get all the users of SAP, particularly in our peers in other municipalities across Canada, across the United States, to see if we are getting the value of what we call licensing. We pay every year license. We pay thousands and hundreds and hundred thousand dollars every year. Basically, the software is readied in every few years, because from the original investment, this is what's going. So I think the governments like ours, we probably need to have a consortium of some sort, say, look, the company, which is a billionaire company, should be doing a lot more than what it is just simply to say, a threat of say, look, if you don't do this, we not be supporting it. So I think the time has come to push back on something like this, because this is a never-ending thing from this company, which continues to be, obviously, once we have it, now you're going to continue to pay. Without those comments, your worship, I'm not sure if there has been an effort on part of our council, of our staff, to look into that sort of having a unified front to really say, look, the time has come that we wanted to get some money, a relief on particularly licensing of it. The licensing is nothing, but once you have installed it, for every workstation, you're paying that kind of money. And it is just basically, I don't know the word to use, held as a hostage, because you have it. You're not, you know, you can't do anything about it, particularly in situations like this. We couldn't even continue to depend on their support, because we would no longer be having the same version of what they have brought forward. And they have to bear a lot bigger responsibility than what this is all about. So those are my comments, your worship. I'd like to hear the staff to see if there's been, or at least maybe a pager on this one sometime, to see if there is some way to really have some more control of the way that these costs are.
We don't have our IT person here with us, but Mr. Chu, I know this is an issue that has been discussed before, how exactly we're able to combat the position that all of us are in in relation to the software and the requirements for improvements in that software. And in fact, you choose one of the systems and then are captive to it. I think there is a good reason for us to work with other municipalities and other users, but maybe you can comment on that for Councillor Dallywell.
For your worship, it is correct, and it is a common concern amongst major computer system users and to look at a long-term technical support of the program. One option that the city could consider is to forego the technical support. And this is an option that the city could exercise. But the disadvantage of that particular option is that the city will not benefit for any future upgrades and also any new legislative requirements that build into the system. So the city will not have the benefit of having that included in the regular system update if you subscribe to an annual technical support or maintenance program. But this is an issue that we have taken up with other municipalities for discussions. And even prior to the recommendation being formally for this report, and we have retained independent consultant firm and to look at the advisability of the replacement of the software program and whether the direction that we have identified is a correct one. So the consultant actually evaluate and provide a recommendation, and the conclusion also supports the direction that we recommend this report.
Part of the report, the consultant was detained, and I understand that. I said that already. We do not have a choice other than I could have, and we could have come basically to the same conclusion. You cannot drop the software anywhere other than to keep up with it, continue to upgrade it, continue to buy new hardware whenever they want to. My question wasn't about that. I think that's the right way. And we got that second opinion. That's fine, good. But I think what I was looking for in the longer run, if there is a considered effort on part of us to really formally then start doing, say, okay, you talked to other municipalities, maybe I would like at least a memo format to say, what does, how many are in this position? What the users, what progress has been made? What discussion have taken place? Sooner or later, this need to be really, really pushed back on this one. This can't continue. This is just far too much for organization like ourselves to continue to always abide by what they dictate to, or you are subjected to say, we won't support it.
Councillor Johnson.
Previous to speakers, unfortunately, the oligopoly corporations that are running the software business in the world essentially have too much control and too much power in that respect. I mean, even your office suite, if you don't keep it upgraded, you get to a point where you can't, you can't run it on your computer, because your operating system won't function with it and it shuts down. I mean, it's way beyond, I mean, I agree with Councillor Dallywell. We need to push back, but it's almost a world issue in the fact that they all do it, and it all comes back in your face. It's, in a sense, the software companies are just too powerful.
Agreed, agreed, agreed. Not disagreeing with that. So not disagreeing with that at all.
All right. Well, I think it's good advice, and we will continue to work at that. And Mr. Chu has said talking to other CEOs about this issue would be helpful, seeing if there's any consensus that can be developed as to a way in which you can increase our bargaining power. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carried. Item B.
2017 Water Works Utility Rates. I would, number one, move that council approve amendment by the city solicitor of the Burnaby Water Works Regulation by law 1953 to provide for the 2017 water rates contained in Schedule III of the report and the bylaw amendments outlined in Section 5 of the report effective 2017 January 1st. And two, that the rate as stated in the report be amended to 1%. Your worship, the report this before us is setting the 2017 water utility rates. That's the amount people pay on, excuse me, on their water service. There was a recommendation sent forward to the committee from staff that we look at a 2% increase, which covered for cost of operation, but also increase some reserve capability. What we're recommending this evening is that that be shaved a bit, from a 2% increase to a 1% increase, so that it's more affordable to the taxpayer and that in a year when property assessments and such are up, people are going to be seeing a higher tax burden. So we wanted to assist if we can in this case. And I think by making it a 1% increase versus the two, it's still attainable.
Councillor Calendino.
Thank you, your worship. I agree with the amendment made by Councillor Johnston. And having spoken to staff, I think staff is in agreement that reducing from 2% to a 1% increase for the 2017, it does not have a huge impact on the operations or the capital projects of the department. And even though it's a very minimal amount, it's the principle that is important for taxpayers. And anytime we can reduce the increase in taxes, even if it is a very small amount, it's always a welcome gesture in favor of the taxpayers. So I'm all in agreement with that.
Thank you. And I do want to make clear that staff's recommendation is one where in these reserves that are only for the purpose of water and sewer and utilities, building up a reserve to allow you to smooth out rates later on, when there are going to be big expenditures, is the motivation for staff looking to keep these rates at what is a reasonable level, one that is within the realm of inflation. But I agree that, given that most people in the lower mainland are seeing huge assessment increases, and particularly increases in their property taxes from the point of view of school taxes and translink and other areas, far aside from municipal expenses, it's a big burden. And so I can see why Councillor Johnston is looking for a way to, even if it is in the case of a relatively small change, to ameliorate the impact of the overall cost of municipal services. Councillor Dallywell, please.
Thank you, your worship. I, you know, I didn't have a whole lot of difficulty with the original report, 2%. I, after talking to staff before and going through this one, I was convinced that 2% was reasonable increase, because it just, when you consider the cost of living, a cost of living index in lower mainland, plus that everything that we buy is all about 2%, and it's a reasonable increase. However, I think since we don't know what the result is going to be of the assessments, I haven't seen them for 2016, but I can only imagine that it's not going to be any less than what was in the last year we experienced. So most likely, the assessment value is going to be again equivalent to pretty well what was in 2016. So people are going to be, homeowners are going to be paying a lot more again this year. So any relief we can get at this point is welcome relief. So I support the 1% decrease, although I think it is something that in the past we have used. If we have some cushion, it's always applied to future massaging and leveling of the rates. So every time we cut down anything like this, it leaves no room to have, if in case Metro Vancouver changes their rates, water rates drastically, you don't have a whole lot of cushion in there. You're going to have to end up passing all that. So it is very, sort of, I'd say risky in some ways, but it's something because with the way 2017 assessments are expected to be, it probably is a prudent move at this point to reduce to 1%.
Thank you. No further discussion. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Similarly, your worship, for 2017 sanitary sewer rates, I would move that council approve the city solicitor to amend the Burnaby Sewer Parcel Tax by law 1994 and the Burnaby Sewer Charge by law 1961 to reflect the 2017 rates found in Schedule C effective 2017 January 1st. And again, I would also move that the rate be amended from 2% to 1%.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Similar reasoning, your worship. I just call the question.
All those in favor, opposed and carried.
And next, your worship, regarding garbage toter fees, secondary suites. I would move that council authorize the preparation of a bylaw amending Schedule VIII, the Burnaby Solid Waste and Recycling by law, to remove provisions and impose separate fees for properties with secondary suites. Your worship, council will remember a bylaw that came forward a couple of months, about six months ago, that would set up an additional fee for garbage services for newly legalized suites. We've heard a few rumblings in the community and asked our staff to go back and look at this. And based on recommendations from our staff, we are hereby recommending that we not proceed with the additional fee for toters.
That's good news for people who have a secondary suite and are ensuring that they're recycling a lot and not putting things into our garbage bins. All right. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carried.
Next, your worship, regarding fire services bylaw amendments. I would move that council approve amendments to the Burnaby Fire Services by law to reflect the proposed additional fees as outlined in the report, and the city solicitor be authorized to bring forward the necessary bylaw. And, your worship, this is just setting up, charging any, setting up an additional fee whereby if the fire department responds to insurance companies for various reports, that there'd be a fee for that service to the insurance company.
All right. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carried.
And, your worship, the next item regarding Board of Variants application fee. And I would move that a fee of $425 be established for applications to the Board of Variants, and the city solicitor be requested to bring forward the necessarily bylaw amendment. Your worship, this is a new charge for residents that would go forward to the Board of Variants. It is a cost recovery fee for the initiation and operation of the Board of Variants process. Staff have done some evaluations. We have, in the past, not had a fee. And we have been incurring roughly $425 per application for these situations to go forward. Sorry, I'm sorry, $780 is what is costing us to process the fee. We are going forward recommending the new fee of $425. We have checked our neighboring municipalities. Most of them do charge, and most of them do charge much more than $425. So we are taking baby steps in this area, but realizing that when citizens do come forward to the Board of Variants, it does have a cost to the taxpayer, and that we believe that the person making that application should bear part of the cost for that appeal hearing.
Question's called. All those in favor, opposed and carried.
And, your worship, the next item is regarding purchasing approval limits. And I would move that council approve the changes to the city's spend and approve limits for the procurement of goods, services and construction as set out in the report. And the council authorize the city solicitor to prepare a bylaw amending the Burnaby Routine Transaction by law 1999 as outlined in Section 4 of the report. Your worship, this report is updating the spending limits for key city staff, mostly, most notably, the city director, city manager, purchasing agent, and senior directors within the city hall organization. It is basically updating these spending approval limits to a 2016 level. The last time this was looked at was 2008.
All right. Councillor Jordan.
Thank you, worship. Yes, I'm happy to support this recommendation coming forward. I was a part of the process at Metro Vancouver where we actually initiated limits, because there weren't any before. Very much higher than this. But through that process, also at Metro Vancouver, I, we had conducted a study that looked at what other cities' spending limits were, both internally for staff and also at what level things had to come to council to be approved. And so I'm happy that the recommendation from our staff in this instance is council will only have to approve things over $500,000, and that's not a very high limit. I think the city of Calgary is $10 million. I'm not sure what Vancouver's is substantially higher. But so we still have the accountability through council, and we still have that oversight role. But there's not very many contracts that the city puts out these days that are less than $500,000. So it's not as if we're like lightening our workload considerably or anything. There will be still a lot of contracts that will still come through council. And so we've just basically increased from $250,000 in 1998, when that number was established, to $500,000 now. And I think that's almost like an inflation adjustment, when you think about it, over 15-year period of time, right? So council still has the authority for those large contracts, but it basically spreads some authorities around also within the administrative levels of the organization for lesser amounts.
And less paperwork and delays.
Exactly.
All right.
For those of us who still use paper.
All right. You ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carried.
And the last one, your worship, from the committee. I would move the recommend, I would move the recommendation that council approve reallocation within Engineering's 2016 annual capital plan to support additional work requirements in major roads, waterworks, sanitary sewers, as outlined in the report. Your worship, this is a good news item. In various projects around the city, our engineering staff are anticipating roughly $1.6 million under spend on many major projects combined. And the report that's before us is recommending some additional work be done by reallocating these capital funds to projects that wouldn't have necessarily made it into this year's capital plan, but now can be completed this year because of the money being underspent in other projects.
Councillor Dallywell.
Thank you, your worship. I have a couple of questions for the staff. One is that this is about, I believe, a $5 million change to previously not approved capital projects individually, although collectively, the report says we're not going to go beyond that. That makes that pretty clear. However, I thought these were different funds, such as you have Water Works, Sanitary Sewer and Storm. They have one utility, and the rest are different. So if you're doing this one, I would have thought that'd be a separate report to say that these are the now changes that would add, and these are the projects. This report doesn't really tell you that. It says what projects are being added for $5 million. It's just simply an umbrella that says, okay. It's just simply an umbrella that says, okay, we'll spend $5 million over, but we'll spend $5 million less than others. Basically, $83 million, 83.52 doesn't change, which is good news. But what I'm looking for bottom line to say, okay, is this, the work that was expected to be done, is that can't be accomplished, that's why the saving is, or two, that no other work was completed, so this is approximately $5 million going to be underspent. And two, and the third particularly, this is where the $5 million be spent now, because that's a new, obviously new projects. So I would think that a report of $5 million difference change would have a little bit more description of what those projects are, and from this one, all I conclude is say, yeah, we're not going to spend any more money, we're not going to save any money, but we're going to do a different project, but doesn't give you that, the rest of those projects. I would like to see those ones in future if that's going to be that kind of magnitude, it's a $5 million change from what we started out with, to have the list of those projects.
Yes.
Your worship, I, so the savings side, if you want to go there first, is actually, it goes over many projects, so a number of them came in under, plus one or two that we did not do for various reasons. In this capital year, some of them were roof replacements, for instance, on these buildings that didn't need to be done because the guys went and did some repair and upgrade work that will probably tide us over for another four to five years. So that's one of those, as well as, for instance, underspend on Laurel Street Works Yard, you know, they haven't moved as fast yet on that one. So that's where, so it's on a number of projects, many actually, over the saving part. The expenditure is spread over again also about 27 different projects, where either there was changes of scope in work, so these were projects that were already bid and come to council for the most part, well, all of them already have and got authority to spend or to award the contracts. And a number of those, the bidding climate this spring was pretty aggressive. For some reason, we also were on the market with a lot of projects coming in from Surrey, for instance, and so there was probably about a 10 and 11% on average increase over our budgets for those 27 projects, we had many others that were savings, as well as some scope changes. And again, those happened not on one big project, but on many projects over about 27 projects. So I'm quite happy in the future to bring such a list. Again, we don't expect this to occur quite very often. It's something that, as we said, if you look toward the end of the year when we're closing a number of purchase orders, where projects are coming to an end, in this case, there was a saving to cover what was a market change among other, and then some scope changes through the year. These were not brand-new projects that came on board, it was really just a spread of pluses and minuses over, you know, we actively at the moment about 103 projects on the go. So out of those 103, 27 are directly impacted on the slightly over expenditures, and the savings occurred then among the rest of those 103. It's a long list, and if council would, I mean, it's a lot of detail, I think, which is why it probably wasn't in here, because it's lots and lots of projects, and they, you know, smaller numbers on each project for the most part, but they add up.
All right, so councillor Dallywell is, Mr. Gauss is saying it's sort of a balance of projects that came in under budget, projects that were over budget because of bids exceeded or scope changes, and on whole, they tried to achieve a balance within the budget at the end of it by redistributing the money that was saved to the projects that would require additional funding, and they can be outlined to you, but it would be a multitude of projects that would be in front of you, both on the savings and on the expenditures. So it would be a big picture, I'm sure staff could do that, but I don't know how helpful that would be to all of the members of council to look through all of that information. Maybe what you could do, Mr. Gauss, is provide councillor Dallywell with that picture just so that he feels comfortable with what, how it was distributed.
Your worship, I might just add that the three funds is 100% correct, so the balance occurs in each fund separately, so there's no transfer of funds between, or balances between the funds, so water, pluses and minuses accrue in water and in sewer separately and in the capital separately, so they're not cross-subsidized, if you like, at all.
Yeah, three different accounts that are being operated.
Correct, and they are balanced in each account.
Right, so if you can just give that information, circulate it to the council in the form of a memo, that'll make sure that councillor Dallywell is satisfied that, about the distribution of those different sums. Would that satisfy your concerns?
Thank you, your worship, and thank Director of Engineering as well. I think it's the, I raised this before, your worship, it's the inconsistency of reports. We will get a report from Parks and Rec, legally defined even up to $25,000, here's that project is, but when we're dealing with some of these, I recognize these are big projects, but certainly when we deal with the $5,000 change of say, all right, we're going to, $5 million now going to be additional spend, even though I know it's not new money, it's the projects that previously we'd not see what they are, but at least there could be a little bit of a one-per-hour line to say what those projects where they'd be going. This doesn't tell me that, and if the report's coming, here's your worship, I think it just only, even somebody who reads out there doesn't give you much to, everybody's not going to get that memo. It would be good to have some little bit more description, say this is where that money's going to be going, and I believe that would be helpful to me. I've asked before, and sometime we do get there, but in this case, I saw that this was, I even heard the director say some have been overspent, some have been underspent, and that happens, but it's good for us to know, me to know anyway, to say what those are. So I would appreciate that page, even if it's too much in the future for the council to digest it, but I'm interested in that. I'd like to see a supplementary report of some sort to say, here's a $5 million difference now into these projects. So thank you, I appreciate that.
The only thing I'm concerned about councillor Dallywell is 101 projects that are then shown on a spreadsheet with amounts attributable increases or decreases over 101 projects with explanations, is a lot of work and it's a pretty big document to be able to put in in regard to this, so that's where I'm a little nervous, plus it's already gone through the financial management committee and been questioned there.
It's also in the capital budget, like you can tell in the capital budget.
So we'll try to provide more information if you would like, but with the limitations that this is 101 projects in engineering through three different capital budgets.
And I appreciate that, there's a lot of there, but there is, I would suggest, that some way to recognize, say, these are the $5 million where that's going into. So I would think, I'm not asking for 105, I'm asking for a general description of where these changes are.
Maybe what you can do, Mr. Gauss, is just look at the major ones that are, you know, we don't need to deal with the ones that are a $10,000 increase or decrease, but where it's plus $100,000, then it would probably be a good place for you to be able to show. Okay. Thank you. And I always like to see good debate when we're spending $83 million. Ready for the question, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Moving on, the city manager's report, thank you, by the way, councillor Johnson. Item one is 5970 Beresford Street, and this is to seek council approval for the engineering department to use a city-owned warehouse facility from December 2016 to December 2017. Ready for the question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item two, is to obtain council approval to award a contract for the supply and delivery of three mini-side loader refuse collection trucks. Question's called, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item three, is to obtain council approval to increase the existing contract for Gilmore Pump Station Upgrade Project. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Motion that the committee rise and report, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Motion to adopt the report of the committee, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Bylaws, councillor Dallywell, please.
Thank you, your worship. First, second, and third reading, I move that bylaw numbers 13690, 13691, 13692, 13693, 13694, 13695, 13696, 13697, 13698, 13700, be now introduced and read three times.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Oh, the water and sewer bylaws, there is a requirement that we make the necessary amendment, right, to reflect the earlier motions by council, right, so both of those are amended.
There will be three, your worship.
Three bylaws.
13692, 13693, and 13694.
Right, and they're all amended to reflect the 1% instead of 2% moved by councillor Johnson. All right, question on the amendment, all those in favor, opposed, carried, and on the motions as amended, all those in favor, opposed, carried. All right.
Second reading, I move that, bylaw number 13639, 13665, 13671, 13672, 13673, 13674, be now read a second time.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
Consideration and third reading, I move that bylaw number 13584, be now considered and read a third time.
Second motion. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion, councillor Jordan, please.
Thank you, worship. I'm pleased to see the recommendation coming forward for third reading for the B.C. Family Housing Site at Southgate. I was quite upset with our local newspaper on the weekend, the featured editorial speaks to the fact of seniors being left out in the cold again, and because of this project that we're now giving third reading to tonight, and then the subsequent 90 additional seniors' units that will be being built on the site, we have 90 seniors' units that will be added to the Southgate site. We have under construction right now, the George Derby site, 122 units of seniors' housing. We had that second reading tonight for Fairhaven, 120 units of seniors' housing that we gave second reading to just five minutes ago, and here's our local newspaper, nothing about any of these things. It's not easy to find the money and the resources and the community support and provincial housing support to put any of these projects together, and these are the first in our community in a very, very long time, but we have three of them in progress now, and including this particular site, which is brand-new social housing to replace a current unit that really needs replacing. So I'm, I was pretty upset, I made a photocopy, and I was going to speak to it under New Business, but then I thought, okay, no, here's an opportunity to show that we're actually moving forward on these other projects, right, in the resulting applications tonight. So, so nothing. We're in the press reflecting, you know, what's actually going on in the city in terms of building seniors' housing, and we've had a couple of other opportunities that have gone by the wayside because there wasn't support for that. So big announcements last week about some, you know, projects in the city, but no recognition of the things that are already in progress, so I guess I could write a letter to the editor, perhaps I'll do that tomorrow, but this was, this was just in the Friday edition of The Illustrious Burnaby Now, so I'm really disappointed in the tact that they took instead of recognizing the real efforts that are being made in the community, and I see Ms. Mulholland here tonight, and Mr. McAllister, who's responsible for this development and what's going to be happening there, and in spite of the snow, thank you all for coming, I think it's really worth recognizing the amount of work that's gone into making these things happen, and it's very disappointing when the local media doesn't even acknowledge it, because I'm sure they covered some of the original stories, but they seem to have forgotten.
I can tell you, councillor Jordan.
And I support the third reading, by the way.
It's one of the, one of the most frustrating issues that I have to deal with as mayor, and I know that Mr. McAllister's here tonight, and he knows how much work I went into on a personal level to be able to generate those 180 units of social housing, 90 new units of seniors' housing, and the 90 units that replace housing that was aged out in much the same way as the housing in Metrotown, as housing that was at the end of its life and was a detriment to the community and the neighborhood, being replaced in a brand-new development as part of that entire project. And, you know, when we, at the public hearing, we had people coming out with placards and screaming, only one person spoke in favor of the, of the social housing development of 180 new units, and that was Ms. Mulholland, and she did it in a kind of backhanded way, but, you know, it was, at least she stood up and said, you know, that this is a good idea. The rest of the people didn't even, they were here and didn't even speak in favor of it, and when I watch the Burnaby Now, who have been so partisan on this issue, have been so patently unfair in their treatment of this issue, have failed to cover anything that showed any sign of optimism in regard to housing initiatives by the city, whether it's rental housing or social housing, but continually are prepared to take a very partisan point of view in regard to some of the transitions that are happening in our community, without ever addressing the issue of growth and the necessity of accepting our share of the population increase. It just, it's really beyond comprehension. I don't think I've seen a newspaper take such an unfair and partisan position over an extended period of time, and it's very frustrating for those of us who are having to make tough decisions, and it's done in a vacuum, it's done without ever actually paying any attention to the facts, which is very, very disappointing, and it's something, I hope, I hope members of the community out there who are looking at what the Burnaby Now does in regard to these issues, do demand of them more sense of fair play, to recognize where progress is being made and the opportunities that have been seized, even if they want to juxtapose the issues that arrive and the challenges that arrive on our doorstep as a result of transition, at least being fair in the way those issues are covered, but so far it hasn't been true. And I really think there is a point where a newspaper should not exercise a partisan point of view, but should have an objective point of view in regard to how it reports issues in our community. So it is very frustrating, and I join you in being frustrated by that process.
When the papers, when the paper says that in Burnaby, low-income seniors are frankly hooped, I don't think that's, that was view of the, of things, but...
No, what it is, is it's a childish partisanship, which, you know, really the editor should be beyond this, is that, you know, and it's one of the reasons people are losing trust in the media. If the media wants people to trust them, they have to be fair, and the reality is, we've seen media be so unfair as to make people disbelieve in them and seek other methodologies for getting their information, and now we're seeing all kinds of false news reports that are coming out, that are causing all kinds of consternation and potential problems, and the media is screaming over it. But, you know, if you're going to tell lies, expect it, lies are going to come out from other people, too. Anyway, it is one of the most frustrating times we've gone through, and I can only say to the public, I mean, go over the head of the media and say to the public, we're doing everything we can to encourage the creation of affordable housing in our community, of creating every social unit of housing we can in our community, but there are limitations in what municipalities are capable of doing, and as a result, it presents what I think is a very frustrating situation for us, and it's not just us. Look at every single municipality in the lower mainland, Oquitlam, Surrey, Vancouver, Maple Ridge, it doesn't matter, Langley, every city is facing the same issue and are trying to deal with it from a municipal point of view, with a total failure of the federal and provincial government to do anything until election time, and then suddenly the announcements fly fast and furious. Maybe one of these editorials should be about that, about the failure of the provincial and federal government to do anything for the last 15 and 20 years.
They are a bit critical of the elements in this article, too, but...
Oh, good. Oh, good, well, that's a new, that's a new phase. All right, well, that's a good debate on a third reading. I was wondering if you wanted to get in on this debate, you're welcome, but, ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
79, and bylaw number 13682, be now reconsidered and finally adopted, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the corporal seal affixed there, too.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, and carried.
Abandonment, I move that, bylaw numbers 13498, 134, 13519, be now abandoned.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, and carried.
That's it, your worship.
All right, and we have a notice of motion.
Do you want the motion, or just the...
Just to resolve this, probably.
Okay, then, therefore be it resolved that the city of Burnaby is supportive of the approach taken by the responsible marijuana alliance of B.C. in anticipation of new legislation from federal government expected in the spring of 2017.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Councillor Johnson?
Uh, no, your worship, by, then I think this is a really wise move to put the potential sales, if it, if it is legalized, in liquor stores whereby there is a, a model built-in, look where they check for identification to make sure that minors aren't accessing either alcohol now or potentially cannabis in the future. I, I know when you go to other jurisdictions where they've legalized it, I was in the Washington State on Saturday, and the first thing you see when you cross the border is, welcome Canadians, come on in, kind of, they're just looking to sell who, to whomever they can. So I think this is a, a wise move to put it in a model that's been tested, been around for 50 years, and is both private and public private.
Councillor Dallywell.
Once again, my apologies, your worship.
All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Is there any other new business? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Yeah.